And Mr. Jones for working so hard on this budget and also taking an input from parents, district staff, board, and the teachers and principals to put this together. I think at this time I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
And we've got a PowerPoint presentation for you to highlight some of the components of the proposed budget for sixteen seventeen year. With revenues, we have a total forty-nine point four million in total revenues, twenty-five point three million in BEP funding from the state of Tennessee, looking at a projected increase of nine hundred fourteen thousand, twenty-one point five million in county taxes with a decrease as a result of our ADA share for property taxes by one hundred sixty-four thousand, and additional projected sales tax revenues of four hundred sixty thousand, two point one million dollars in maintenance effort from the city of Tennessee.
Did Shelby County's total property tax revenue go down?
And I'll clarify, that's what I was going to try to explain. It's our ADA share that has gone down, so Cardinal has had an increase in student population compared to us, we have been relatively stable in our number of students, so it's the number of students that has changed, not the taxes.
So we're a smaller piece of the whole pie.
We're a smaller piece of the whole pie.
And we have not received any, you know, projected revenue from the annual. This is based upon a joint effort of three municipal districts in Shelby County schools as we sit down together to come up with a first number.
So that's a projected number?
Projected number, yes.
And when will we have the final?
We hope in the next couple of weeks. And the BEP funding, we should get our first formal communication in just a couple of days on the fifteenth of April. We will get updates in May, in June, and the final BEP number in July.
But that nine fourteen is based on communications you've had with the state about what it's likely to be.
Yes, or Brad Davis.
Thanks.
So one of the trends that I thought would help as we go through this process is to highlight in the boxes you see here headcount increases, so if we're talking about hiring individuals in our proposal, we have them identified, and then we've talked about the reason why would we would hire any new individuals. So you can see, for example, an RTI code, their position would be a school level position, so we kind of identified that, so you'll see this throughout the PowerPoint. But, Mr. Haddo?
The first era of that's just a little stepping base for everyone all the way up to step eighteen. The average salary right now is about fifty-eight thousand dollars, and the average staff, now which staff is probably around nine hundred, twelve hundred. The coalesstipend is for those people that haven't reached a top level of being with us, so that'd be anyone after step eighteen, and we looked at it, just a two percent raise. I think the typical teacher raised family around the country may be two point three percent. The fully funded OPEB annual required contribution for retiree health insurance, we are continuing, we just met again as a committee, and we're trying to control that cost and lower the expense there in funding that. And I'm looking at, it's probably premature for me to tell you where the committee is. The committee, though, is a, was really good. We're going back to the actuary based on some revelations from the committee to cover the cost for our employees that are in our health plan. Hopefully that can be done sooner than later, but I think that there's some significant savings along the arm and the trunk there. I think that that's it.
And I will clarify that the coalesstipend is a stipend, it's not a permanent pay raise for those individuals who are beyond step eighteen, so that if we have, for example, a decrease in revenue, their base pay is still the same. This is very, it is the exact same thing as the loyalty bonus that we did.
That's what we did this year.
This previous year. So it doesn't lock you into permanent.
How much does the stipend have to be? I know we did five hundred.
Two percent, I think it was two percent.
It'd be two percent of whatever their salary is, depending on what education line they're on.
For pretty much everybody that's getting a stipend, it will be bigger than the stipend that they got this year.
Five hundred.
Because if you're over, if you're eighteen, step eighteen, even step eighteen bachelors, you're close to sixty, it'll be like twelve hundred, and if you're non-certified, is that right?
Yes.
If you're classified, two percent is going to be like four hundred at least versus the three hundred you got this year.
Correct.
Chinese teacher at Houston High School, that position will only be filled if the enrollment demand warrants.
Correct.
We can support the position.
I think that on the three seventy.
And but we had, we'd actually talked about, I think, Mr. Deli, when we were talking on the phone, one of the requests that we had heard from Houston Middle School was for an additional foreign language teacher, and we talked about doing things equitably between Houston Middle School and Riverdale, that students have the same opportunities. So our recommendation would probably be if the Chinese class doesn't make, to modify this into a foreign language position that's shared between the two middle schools.
Has, my daughter has registered for her ninth grade classes, has that been rolled up yet, or do we, was Chinese on the, we call it the racing form in college, was Chinese on the curriculum guide?
Yes.
Course selection guide?
Yes.
And do we know how many people, how many high school students selected Chinese?
I don't have an exact number, but it has not been thirty-nine so far.
Okay, so this is more likely a shared foreign language teacher between the two middle schools. I did not ask this the other day, and thank you to Mr. Jones and Mr. Manuel for taking time out last week to help me take a deep dive on some questions. I didn't ask about special needs adult, what does that mean?
So, one of the things that we talk about is practicing what we preach, and so we've had this big push to have community conversations where we had, our goal is to promote businesses in our community of hiring individuals with special needs. And so we have an opportunity of a student who is working, he's volunteering at Farmington Elementary School right now, that this would be a paid, part-time position for that individual. So they're serving the role as a teacher assistant, but it's someone who has a disability.
So this is part of the Vanderbilt grant that we got in the fall, that was to work with the community, to create and work with the community creating jobs for our learning disability adults in the county, this would just be?
Another one of those positions.
One of those positions.
But we think it's a perfect example of what should happen and what we're promoting. So it's not to work with special needs, it's individual?
That was my question.
Yes, as special needs.
And is it part-time, you said?
Mm-hmm. I think they're doing twenty hours a week right now, volunteering. Okay, so I'm sorry, Ms. Price, if you want, go ahead and go through.
Okay. The RTI coach at the high school is just around now, the RTI coaches are, the way we've structured it is now being used in other districts across the state. Our RTI coaches did a presentation for the Southwest Core, and we've had many districts reach out to find out what that job description is, what they take care of, and what our results have been. So just bringing that, that coach position to the high school to help with the parts monitoring, making sure teachers are trained to use the resources, making sure the students are having their needs met in the RTI process. One more thing about the Chinese teacher, we are watching numbers at the high school, but I have to remember that that Chinese teacher shared the middle school, so we have to watch those numbers also. And then the four teaching assistants, this was, and to give each of the principals one more teaching assistant, this helps with RTI, with specific reading programs where they can take one or two students and really dive deeply into some depth of areas to make those groups even smaller. Oftentimes, teachers need to go to IEP meetings, they have to have the classes covered, we don't want to call a sub-in, so the assistant will go in and step into that classroom and take over. The elementary schools, this is a very big deal, and the principals and teachers depend on these assistants. When we came back as Germantown, we had restored some of those numbers, and then I believe Farmington and Dogwood decreased their numbers and were going to trade for a gifted teacher, but I think it hurt them, although they're meeting their needs and they're gifted students, I think they, they had just problems trying to get everything taken care of, so this would help in that area.
The RTI position at the high school, I know the middle school, there's a designated RTI time, and in high school, we're not going to have a designated RTI time, are we?
It's a scheduled course.
If, if, if a student needs RTI, they would take the course.
They're serving the tier-three students.
That makes sense. You said the Chinese teacher will be split with the middle school?
That, that teacher is currently split with the middle school, she teaches two sections, I believe, at Houston Middle and two sections at the high school, she has a travel period and a planning period, if I'm not mistaken.
And the challenge we're having with this Chinese teacher, like we talked about, is the state has changed their certification process.
So the current staff member is not certified?
Is not certified.
For high school.
For high school. For a high school credit, so we can't operate under that transitional license anymore. It would have to be someone who has that certification in order for students to get the credit Chinese.
So we could keep that Confucius partnership with that one teacher and teach them at the middle school, because they don't have the same.
Requirements.
Requirements, thank you, at the middle school, of us, they do at the high school, but if we continue Chinese at the high school, they've got to be, they've got to have a different certification.
Okay. Other highlights you'll see? And one of the, one of the things that we've talked, that I've talked about with all of you is that we had built into the budget the transition away from shared services to serving these functions in-house. And so you see a transition year that's more expensive than the final roll-off year because we're having to migrate data over. So an example is, if we have Power School right now, and we go to Edgewood Student Information System, or we go to Skyward Information System, we have to pull up both programs, and there's an implementation year to migrate the data over, which would happen after Christmas. So that's the first trend that you see with the, with those systems, so we're looking, there are increases in the student information system, human resources, financial management systems, rollover.
I didn't ask this the other day, how many, how many, how much further do we have to go with school support staff enrolling out one-to-one?
Well, for the current model, that would be it, because that'll, that'll give us a designated person at both middle schools and the high school.
And Riverdale, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That includes Riverdale, I'm sorry. One person Riverdale, one person.
And Farmington and Dogwood will share.
And Farmington and Dogwood will share.
And the point five, where's the other half a person, or is it a part-time job?
If we implemented a new SIS system, it'd probably start in January, so that person would start.
So it's partial year, not a part, part of a person?
Right.
We have another one of those in the purchase, somewhere in operations purchasing or something like that.
Yes, and it's when they're rolling on.
That is true, great plan.
And then for us, you know, we have those over a hundred thousand dollars in savings that they can pay with the second half of those positions. When we do the standalone, that's where we're.
Let's probably not going to jump out in the PowerPoint, there's about three hundred thousand in more or less one-time costs.
Right.
In transition, so the, the run rate cost will be about three hundred thousand dollars less than the this-year cost?
Correct.
Yes. So one of the items that, when we were up at the Tennessee School Boards Association, we, I think you were in the presentation with me, there was a school that talked about how they were utilizing existing students to help with their tech support, and I thought it was, it was a brilliant idea because not only did it add more resources to a resource-starved environment, it also gave the students a chance to learn firsthand what it's like. And so I don't know that that's a replacement for anything we're doing here, but I think it certainly would be something that we ought to look at as a district, because we got a lot of really smart kids at that high school who could do a phenomenal job helping support our computers.
I think it's a great idea, me and John talked about that, you know, John Burnett there is, is right, and he's pretty busy handling the teachers in the small group of one-to-one he has, you know, when he, when it's, he has every student in there with the computer and the teachers, he's, he's going to need some help, and so I think that probably the best.
Especially as the students grow in terms of which students can, you know, have computers, boy, it'd be real easy if you knew someone who was on the tech team, hey, my computer's not working, and they could fix it.
Yeah, I've kicked around that with the cabling and tech teacher at that school, or at Houston High.
His students would be a good.
Be a great, Mr. Duno.
Yeah, his students would be a great fit.
So, I mean, they're kind of doing it sometimes already, but yeah, it's something we're, in the preliminary discussions.
I have it in my notes, but I'm pretty sure it was Maryville who.
Yeah, who's Maryville.
Who, who did that, and, you know, they, they had a lot of really good things to say about it, probably some learnings there, but I thought it was a really good idea.
Yep. So you can see, so these are the increases that we're recommending, and then you can roll on to. Next. Mr. Grace?
So yes, the eight hundred new computers will be the next phase of the one-to-one, that would be, next year we'll have every eighth grader, every ninth grader carrying a laptop. There'll also be a few additional ones for those ninth grade classes that'll have tenth graders mixed in, so we'll have like some class sets in there, so to speak, so they can actually use that, the whole class will be one-to-one. The cabling, software management, all that's kind of having to happen to get us ready for the implementation. And then we've had a lot of complaints from the schools about their, the older technology we kind of inherited from Shelby County, you know, there's probably seven or eight instructional carts there that we need for checkout and for testing, but we have to have some kind of a plan to replace those, so we thought if we could do two per year for each school, then you're having, you're replacing two out of the eight, let's say, every year, and you're keeping a good, a good model there, you're going out in four years.
And I spoke to Ms. Rukoski this morning about how this process works at his school, and he really says what, what they're looking for is they, they'll have an older cart that they divide up amongst the grade level, so each teacher will take, think about a cart has thirty computers on it, they'll take five computers off for each teacher, and then they'll have those for stations in their classroom, but that doesn't allow you the opportunity to have a whole-class computer lesson, and so they also won't have, would want floating carts for grade levels that they could check out and use for lessons that every child needs the computer in their classroom. So that's the objective with those computer carts. Okay. And I'll hit this, so this is the, as we roll off of the shared services group, we're talking about one of the functions that we would want to replace is the business function. We actually discussed this person's role during the last budget project, but this would be a business person, purchasing agent, so you see a quarter of them, we would recommend rolling, rolling them on really the last quarter of.
April one.
Of next fiscal year. And then, of course, we talked about the modular classrooms.
That's actually a lease, is it not, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the lease, yes.
So it's the year one cost?
It's the year one cost. You see that, you'll see the debt payment to the city of Germantown for the Riverdale construction project that's built into the budget, and of course, there's an increase in the transportation contract and for the change in start times. Okay. And those are the main draft highlights, if y'all want to. There's a printout that you have too that also summarizes.
What was on?
Yes. So I was hoping that really with that code, you could see headcount versus programs versus the different things, and there are also pending items that are listed on this sheet to see, to see where we had estimates that were built into the budget process.
And most of those are just verification of our revenue estimates. A couple other small items, we've yet to get the TCRS retirement contribution percentage for classified employees, that changes every two years, so we'll have a change effective July one, two thousand and sixteen. Working with our insurance broker right now, as we look at our renewal for liability insurance, so we'll be confirming as pre-mews. His initial thoughts were a two percent decrease, but we'll also be looking at our coverages and dollar bills. And then Dan's already mentioned the OPEB benefit plan design, still taking a little more time with that to review and make recommendations.
And based on meetings that I've had and the conversations that I've had with board members, I'd like to hit two topics before we dig in and just answer questions that y'all have on the budget after that. So the first we can do is, Mr. Hoover, you would ask us to take a look at the employer contribution for health insurance, so I'll highlight just some key things in this budget. So if you look in the fifteen sixteen budget, you'll see a yellow box, currently our employees contribute thirty-five percent towards the health insurance plan, and that's approximately one point three million, and the district is putting in two point five million, which is sixty-five percent. If you look at the bottom column on that same left-hand side of the page, it shows you our cash position as of March thirty-first, which was one point seven million, and I'm frowning. It shows, and then Mr. Jones has done some predictions about where we will end up the year with our health insurance, so you can see he's done a calculation for contributions that'll be collected through the remainder of the year, our stop-loss reimbursements that we have yet to pay, our claims through six thirty, and you can see that he's projecting that we will have one point seven million in that health insurance account, so a strong balance.
At the end of the school year?
At the end of this, at the end of the school year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yes.
Fiscal year.
If you, we have a, you know, health insurance consultant that works with the district, Mr. Bob Shute, and his recommendation is that we spend, you keep thirteen to fourteen percent of your claims amount in a reserve in order to handle, you know, ebbs and flows and fluctuations. For us, that's approximately four hundred and twenty thousand. So you can see that we have talked and we would be willing to reduce the amount of the employer contribution to this health insurance plan, I think we saw that we don't have to keep building as big a reserve as we are, this will still build a reserve in that health insurance account. So our recommendation would be that we could drop it from two point five million district contribution, if you look on the left, to the right, you see it's a two point three five, or two point three million contribution for the sixteen seventeen budget. That doesn't affect the employees percent that they're having to pay, they will not see an increase in their health insurance plan, but it does decrease the amount that the district is putting in.
So have you heard anything from around the county or the other districts, the shared plan that everybody else is in, I know they had a premium adjustment, premium increase for the school year that we're in right now, have you heard anything about what they're saying for next year?
I have not heard for sure, but I believe that they're going to have to.
I think they're looking at another increase.
I think they're going to have to have another premium increase.
Some bad claims.
So just to be clear, we started with the same premiums pretty much as the other school districts, they had an increase last year and we did not.
Correct.
We think they're probably going to have an increase this year, and we are not.
Correct.
That's a good call.
Being self-insured is a good thing. Now, caveat, we've had good claims years, I think we've had one individual who hit our stop-loss claims, so, and we don't have retirees currently on our plan, which also helps, we have younger, no, we have some, but a very limited amount of retirees that are currently on our health insurance plan, and so that kind of could skew things too, but yes, very good decision, we're in a good.
But in terms of balancing this healthcare budget, when we have the OPEB accounting fully up and running, it should be somewhere between one and two hundred thousand dollars that's currently hitting the healthcare fund that'll, that'll be funded through our OPEB contribution?
Right, and those, those cost will shift to another funding source.
So, and, and looking at the total here, that's, you know, two or three percent cushion that we have to maybe make a third consecutive year?
With no increase in healthcare premiums?
Correct. Well, and I think it's worth noting that the third consecutive year, and we've built a reserve of over a million dollars, which is probably twice what's recommended that we have. Now, I think we've been, we've had good claims years, so I don't think we should look to reduce that dramatically, but I mean, to me, this is a pretty clear, pretty clearly, we probably don't need to be contributing as much as we're doing, because we're going to build a reserve that's going to end up sitting there and, and not going to be to anyone's benefit, so I would definitely support reducing that contribution.
I would too, I'd like to know, where are we going to put those funds? I mean, I would like to see us, you know, we're, we're working with the city right now and putting together a wellness clinic for the employees, I would like to see those funds go towards, because we're going to be expected to put some funds in to opening up the wellness clinic.
Startup cost?
Yes, so our recommendation would be to put it into the capital budget, which is, you know, a typical place to put some reserves on it. And, you know, like Mr. Shupe has told us in the past, the way to save on health insurance is to make people healthier, so that wellness clinic will serve that function for us, so we're investigating that, and we'll come with a proposal to the board on what to do, Mr. Haddo will, and his team, once we've done our due diligence.
So what we'll do with the budget draft is we'll reduce some of the health insurance, medical insurance line items, about seven percent, and then we can shift the same cost into the capital budget.
Yeah, so the revised healthcare budget doesn't tie to the current draft of the general fund budget.
Correct, right, so I'll make adjustments for it.
And I don't think FY seventeen is necessarily the time to do it, but maybe FY eighteen, I would really like to see us take a, a comprehensive look at our healthcare plan and look at, you know, combined with the clinic, are there things we can do to the structure of the plan, are there other wellness initiatives that we can all roll into a, a kind of a comprehensive reform of the healthcare plan with the goal, in my mind, the goal in my mind being to put more money in the employee's pocket. So to me, if we, if we can structure a healthcare plan that generates a lower total cost for everybody, I'd want to, to direct that savings to higher paychecks, but looking at what's going on in the private sector, I think it's, there's a real possibility that there's three, four, five hundred thousand dollars of cost avoidance that could be structured in with a different plan. And again, I, I think we've got a lot going on this year, I'm not pushing that we do that in FY seventeen, but I'd like us to keep it kind of on the radar.
And the city has started the Health of Germantown initiative, and so that might be a way to get our employees plugged in as well with healthy choices, I think they might eventually hire somebody that's in wellness and nutrition and all that, and so that might be something to partner with the city on.
And Brian Fisher was very instrumental in them getting that grant, one of our employees was very instrumental, and especially with the Go Noodle program.
The information from that and his working with them, he really was instrumental in us being, getting that, or City of Germantown getting that healthy initiative grant.
Well, the clinic may cause you to make some changes to the plan just in terms of encouraging employees to use the clinic rather than the, whatever network doctor they're using today.
Well, it's a plus too, for if a teacher has a planning period, they can run over there and use it and be back.
Or do some of our set costs.
Yeah, I think a clinic makes a lot of sense, both from a cost reduction and from a convenience standpoint, so I think it makes a lot of sense. Do we have a sense as to startup cost, what those could be? I think it's good to put some of this into that, that fund, but do we have any idea what that looks like?
Oh, did you ask what the year one, the year one cost to get up and going is about three hundred fifty thousand dollars?
That's our share of the total?
Um, I believe so, when looking at the report, yeah, Germantown's cost from what Bob said.
So that's all, every, both the city? We're expecting we would split that with the city?
No, I think that's Germantown's cost for, it's three fifty.
Germantown GMSD?
GMSD.
Okay.
And then the savings that he projects after three years, after that startup cost is what he pays, about eight hundred thirty-one thousand.
That's good.
So he's, he's working with us still.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the health insurance? Okay, the other.
Just one other question, so we're not going to have any increases to the, to the employee contribution, which I think is a really good thing, no significant plan design changes?
Not at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest if the district could look at, you know, what we're doing with it since we have these extra funds is we're letting the, we're benefiting from it, the cost, we aren't giving any benefit to the employees.
Correct.
And I don't know if we could look at, as a one-time little perk, picking up like one pay period of health benefits for our employees, whether it might be at Christmas.
I think that was, Shelby County has seen that before, where they would have a pay holiday for employees based on how the reserve's growing and doing, I think that would definitely be something positive. I think that would definitely be something positive to look at for our employees.
I've done that in the past with what I call a premium holiday. When you just, on the payroll system, turn off the switch for a pay period.
Would that be about, what, twenty thousand or?
For, for a pay period for employees, for their contributions, about seventy thousand. And then it's about one hundred and thirty thousand for the employees, each pay period, about two hundred thousand.
Maybe that makes sense to look at, tracking how our reserve does and correct, look at it down the line.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting maybe we could just look at it for next year.
If we have a good August, September, October, and we're tracking, well, because the last couple of months have been higher than the months that came before. And we really don't know if that's the new normal or if that was just, we know we had that one big claim. But, but yeah, if we got, if we got through the first quarter of next year, next fiscal year, tracking well, I think that would be great.
That's just something I'd like to look at if we're doing, doing well.
Okay. So the other thing that I think, Mr. Hoover, you asked me to really look into, was just the transportation analysis and how Mr. Kathy had done it. So I asked him to give you the breakdown. It should look very similar to the game that we played in the start time meetings with the orange and yellow blocks. But here's his, here's his analysis so you can see. A million dollars just in the base cost for buses. We do have one special education bus that could still be shared with Carrville schools. So we would want to do that because it's a huge savings source, twenty versus the forty-one thousand. We also, this is an estimation. We do not know, when, once we sit down and start doing the routing, what is gonna be the increased cost of buses. So this could be a reserve, it may not be spent, we don't know. But we plugged in, or Mr. Kathy plugged in an additional four buses into this amount. So as we have shorter runtimes, and we would only use those as needed to, to fill the routes. So you'll see the increased bus routes. We have CPI field trips, and that's for, that's for our special needs population. They go and do job shadowing and job duties. There's a three point five percent contract increase that's budgeted here for the Durham contract. There's a total for, that's the shared bus that's added in there. We have the special education assistance on the special education buses. We have an amount for the Carrville penalty. And then we have the total bus amount that you saw in that, that contract, which is one point four million for transportation. Our recommendation would be to leave the other thirty-eight thousand dollars in there because I think it is budgeted at one point four or five in the transportation budget.
A cushion.
A cushion, and, and part of that cushion could be, we don't know what our driver situation is gonna be. You know, we've had this conversation before that we're moving drivers from six-hour days down to four-hour days. Getting the drivers may be an issue. So we thought about, we may need that for some type of sign-on bonus to offer Durham that if they want to offer that to their drivers. Anyway, we, we need to be creative in getting drivers next year. So we thought, having that cushion would be helpful in case we want to do some program like that. Makes sense.
Can I ask a question about the three and a half percent contract increase?
Yes.
I'm assuming that's built into the contract.
Yes.
It's mandatory regardless of performance complaints?
Yes.
It's non-negotiable?
Yes. And there's a big, there's a cure rate and stuff for the drivers. And we've had good periods. We've had an uptick in the past month and a half. And I know Mr. Kathy sent you an all, on email, because they are dealing with sub-drivers. They are dealing with a shortage of bus drivers.
And I think we talked about that you were gonna beef up the bright arrow to let people know.
Yes. The issue that we were having was we can control what we can control, and we keep having conversations with the Durham management. But with transportation, once our first routes hit, like in the morning, at Houston Middle School and Houston High School, if there's an issue with a late bus, we've worked out a system where we can communicate with central office so that then they can contact the middle-tier schools and the third-tier schools to send out bright arrow messages. And the same thing happens in reverse. It's really for, the issue for us is we don't know sometimes when that first bus is showing up late or those first buses are showing up late.
So do we track that at the school?
Yes.
So we don't know before they get to school is what you're saying?
Correct.
Whether they're late, okay.
If they haven't shown up to the lot to get their buses?
Yeah, I get it.
Now, but, and that's part of what we're working on with Durham management. They're supposed to let us know so that we can send out those bright arrows. And there have been some serious breakdowns in communication about when buses aren't showing up.
Because it definitely makes a big difference if you get a text in the morning saying that the bus is running twenty minutes late. You can make a decision, I mean, they're gonna drive my child to school or they can sit inside in the warm
Right.
when it's, you know, dry rather than standing up.
So that's the issue that we're dealing with Durham right now on.
That's a good one. We're sort of shooting in the dark on how many additional buses we'll need to accommodate the forty-five-minute turnaround.
Correct.
Any, any sense of whether those will be tier one or tier two? Or you're thinking it'd be both, it'd be?
Yeah, I think it would be, yeah.
Okay. Something I would really encourage, I appreciate this because now it makes more sense. The, the cost estimate makes more sense. Something we had kicked around back in the day, you know, in all the iterations we went through with how we changed our times. One of the, the topics that had come up from the community was, well, why don't you, you know, run one bus to two schools? And there's a whole logic that goes with that. But the one place that it looked like that might maybe possibly make a little sense was in the overlap between the Houston Middle and Houston High zone.
And we only found three buses that could do that.
Right, particularly on the south side of town. But my point was gonna be if you could combine two or three. What we have now is a fifteen-minute offset between them. So if I look at this chart where I've got a leftover, a one-tier bus at one, one-tier at the high school and four, single-tier at the middle school, if I could take three of those and, and make them a combined, if I could use four buses to run six routes between middle school and high school, I might shave, I might shave two full buses, maybe three, but I might shave two full buses off of this and save about eighty grand. And the reason I bring it up is I know you've already thought of that. There's probably some data you'd wanna maybe look at collecting now. Looking for head of operations. There's some data you might wanna collect now about who's getting on at which stop.
Correct.
I know you know how many kids are on each bus. But if I had a feel for, on average, this is the number of kids at each stop, I could start to put together a combined middle school, high school bus?
Right.
That it doesn't have to worry about, and in fact, you could serve, you could serve Dogwood. You could do middle school, high school and Dogwood, but you would struggle to do middle school, high school and Riverdale.
Correct. Yeah, they're gonna look at all that.
Or middle school, high school and Farmington. Because you'd be looking at a thirty-minute turnaround.
They will look at all that routing.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the bus? Any questions on that? Any questions on the healthcare, the health insurance plan?
And with that, we'll just open it up to board members' questions on specific line items in the budget.
So one of the items I had for the board to talk about was, you know, we had this list of priorities that we kind of all put in for, which I thought this was really good and really helpful, and I really kind of appreciate this. So one of, one of the, there were two asks on here that I thought, well, if this is a need, then maybe we ought to find a way to make it happen. I thought the board ought to talk about it. One was the high school asked for an additional English teacher because they thought that class size was getting too large and understand the need to balance resources. But that's, that's one area where I think, to the extent that we can help offsite increase class sizes and we have the space to do it, which we do at the high school, I think it's something we ought to look at. And the other was along the same lines. I think Ms. Williams had asked for, and Houston Middle had asked for a shared foreign language teacher. Sounds like maybe that's gonna be taken care of with the Chinese position. So maybe that one's not as much an issue. But I don't know, you know, if, to the extent we can fund it, I really think that additional English teacher.
Mr. Cherry did request that. I don't know what.
And I understand that you, you know, I mean, if you start opening up to, principals can ask whatever, whatever they want. We, we don't have unlimited resources. But I think it's definitely something that we should at least talk about and understand. From a priority standpoint, where does that fall in line? And is that something we should try and find money for or not? So I don't know what the board thinks or whether, Ms. Price, you have a sense of that or Mr. Manuel?
I think, first of all, in teacher salaries, we have five positions, five growth positions put in. And so we could wait and see what enrollment looks like and what we're gonna have to add teachers. If there's a teacher, we could absolutely use one of those positions at the high school. Or we can find additional funds and other accounts and make that happen. I think that high school, the English department could probably use, and maybe it's not a full position, but I did, we gave them one position last year, but it's not a full position because one teacher rotates through alternative school, right? So the rest of the time, they get to use that
For a regular.
partial of a position, whether it's math or language arts, and to cover a section. So with that addition, they probably are put in a little bit of a bind in the English department. We have a math person that's paid through federal funds that's helping that target assistance group with math. So we have an extra section kind of math going on already, so.
If, if the board desires, we could take that extra money that we have from the health insurance account.
We already spent that on that.
I know, I'm just saying.
Well, maybe we could wait until, maybe we could wait till the, till enrollment. And, and at that time, I mean, it's easy enough to hire an additional teacher.
How big is the English contract? Ten or eleven teachers?
My total teachers in English.
And then the, the other question I was, I had, I'm not su, I, I know we've talked about it before, but I don't remember what the answer was. Is it legal to buy a teacher's planning period? Or in other words, pay them for a seven and a half hour day instead of a, or eight-hour day instead of a seven-hour day? Whatever, they're, they're seven hours now.
The concern, the concern that we have with our staff is that we want them to spend that planning period, planning lessons, looking at data. The PLC, the professional learning community, is a huge initiative nationally and in our district where we are meeting, the teachers are meeting once a week to look at their student data, break them up into groups and look how they share that. If we start buying their planning periods away, in a way, we're devaluing that. We're using it for other purposes, but we're saying that that teacher is not, loses that time to-
So right now, the, all of the English teachers or all of the sophomore English teachers get together once a week to compare notes during? So they have, they have a common planning period?
Not common, but that's also what we were doing with the early start or late start days at the high school was they were using that for PLC time. But they are supposed to be using it for data preparation. So what they're supposed to be doing, they're just supposed to be doing common formative assessments where they're looking at, you know, common quizzes between the English classes or math classes or science classes. And then when they get together, they're compiling their data, which is, I think they're having it monthly or quarterly for those late start days. So that's my only concern is, yes, we could see that as being a benefit for staffing, but we want teachers to be planning. We want that to be a priority for them. We want them to, to use that time.
Well, I don't know if you've ever subbed or been there. That's, that needs to say, but that's the time you can go to the restroom of the day. And also, it's the time we need.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we
I'm just saying.
require somebody to do that.
Right.
I know what you're saying.
I just worry that, I worry that, you know, it's, it's a care that I don't wanna offer because, you know, as, when I was a teacher, you know, you're trying to do everything to make additional dollars for your family. And teachers are gonna do it. Whether it's the right thing for them to do professionally or not, they're gonna do it to make more money for their family. And especially if you're talking about, most of our teachers at the high school specifically have extracurricular activities. So they may be coaching track till, you know, six o'clock at night, seven o'clock at night. And then, so then what really happens to the classroom time? What really happens to the, or they're doing band?
If they have a Spanish club and they have to do, you know, you gotta write down everybody's dues, everything has to be-
So that's my only concern is that-
You know, when are they gonna do that during class time? I mean, I'm, instead of after school?
Ms. Price, if you wanna, if you wanna weigh in, Teresa, on PLCs and-
I go just the opposite way. I'd, I'd rather make a day shorter so they have additional planning time. That's something we did in Florida and as well as California, early at Wednesday, you know. So I, I kind of go just the opposite way and instead thinking of work longer with students. And I, I totally understand that, but we will get better achievements and growth if teachers actually have more time to really dive in and figure out how to move their students forward.
Okay. Do you have a feel for what the average class size is in English at the high school? It cannot be bigger than thirty-five, right?
Correct.
No single, no individual class can have more than thirty-five kids.
We have fourteen teachers that teach English at the high school in total, nine to twelve.
But we'd have to look at the number section of English because some of those teachers teach other things besides.
You're saying some teachers, not, not every teacher's teaching six periods of English?
Correct.
And we may have some funds available on the special education teacher line item. We have twenty-eight FTEs and we may only twenty-seven. So we might could shift that one FTE to-
What is a fully loaded cost of a position?
Lovely seven.
About seven percent of that.
So if I did just the simple math, average, add fourteen teachers, taking eighteen, seventy-nine students, it's about twenty-six point eight students per section. Now, we'd have to look at actual sections to see if that's what it is.
So it's a little bit higher than that?
Yes.
That's the least it could be? You know, I, I don't, I'm not in the mood to push really hard one way or the other, but I think as a community and as a leadership team, that class sizes is one of the, one of kind of the next focus for us. At the K eight level, we've been really constrained in what we can do there. Well, we're, we're gonna, things are gonna open up a little bit for us this next year, at least at two of the campuses. And so I, you know, the one place I won't argue pushback on spending money is adding classroom teachers.
Why don't we wait until, and have Ms. Price determine what the average is right now and get back to us?
Or we, I mean, we could just go ahead and, as Mr. Jones suggested, take that FTE and spend, roll it to general fund teacher. Then we've got six extra positions. And if enrollment stays steady, then I, then I, then we have a position there.
Yeah, and I, I'm all in favor of reducing class size. And that's why it kind of has it looked at me. And I realize, you know, everybody wants more resources, so you gotta balance that. But I would very much be in favor of it.
That's fine. You wanna move that?
I'll make that move.
Thank you.
And, and I have a little bit of a different opinion. So, you know, we know it's a priority for Mr. Cherry. And, you know, we've always, that's a priority here and we'd like to see that. And if we can take care of it, I think it's great. But I think that we as a board have to be very careful of saying we're gonna reduce class size, reduce class size, reduce class size. Because where smaller classrooms make an impactful difference is K one-two. Once you hit third grade and beyond, the size of the class does not impact academic performance. And that's shown in research study after research study. The state of Tennessee did, you know, the STAR study back in the eighties, and that's been, you know, heralded as one of those. So I think we just have to, you know, really look at putting our money into where it's going to make the most impactful difference for the academic achievement of students. And I'm not opposed to an additional English teacher at the high school if the need warrants. I think that's awesome. I think it's wonderful. But I just want to caution us that we don't do that district-wide.
So maybe one of the things that we need to do is have a discussion about what is optimal class size. Because I think it'd be good to look at the data. There's a lot of, some conflicting data out there. But I don't know that we've ever had a discussion about what is optimal class size, you know. I guess different, I guess anecdotally, different people have different opinions, right? I think a lot of people feel like, a lot of, the reason people go to private schools is because they have smaller class sizes and they feel like their kid gets more individual attention. And maybe the data doesn't support that, but people feel that way. I think, you know, there is a limit by which you probably, it's diminishing returns. I don't know where that point is, right? At some point, there is a difference between having fifty kids in a class and twenty kids in a class, but I don't know where that break is. So probably good for us to have that discussion. Probably not something we're gonna have tonight because I think there's a lot of work that has to go into it. I'd love to look at the studies you're referencing.
I would more than.
So there's, but, I mean, clearly, at some point, it does matter whether you have a hundred kids in a class or twenty kids. It's just where does that break happen?
Most, most say eighteen or less. But the interesting thing is, I've been talking to some more of the private schools and they are losing students in the elementary. And so they are having to drop sections. And so now, some of the private schools are looking at having larger class sizes.
I think they're actually closing the-
I think they're actually closing the ECS campus, the one elementary campus that.
Oh, the Germantown one?
No, Germantown one will be their only one that they have left.
Those are the one on Macon?
Or no, there's, no, I think they have three.
That's their middle school, high school, that's on Macon. It's an elementary school in Memphis.
And that's anecdotal, I don't know that for a fact, I've just heard that.
So I want to piggyback on what Natalie said, and this is not exactly what you said, but it's in tune with what she said. And I'm a hundred percent on board. We ought not to look at English as one-off and say, well, that's what Mr. Cherry asked for, so that's what we're going to do. We ought to have in mind that these are the class sizes that we want as a district. This is what we're striving toward, and we may not have enough money to do it. Right now, we don't have enough room to do it, but this is what we're striving toward, and it should be thoughtful and calculated and based upon the best available information. And it's not a number that, that I would have much input into coming up with. I don't have, feel any expertise there. But if we're driving towards a firm number, this, this whole conversation about the budget and what's our regular instruction budget going to be, it'd be a lot more meaningful, it'd be a very interesting addition to this discussion to say, as a district, as a leadership team, we have decided that we want eighteen or sixteen in kindergarten, and seventeen in first and second grade, and then the state maximums are okay at the rest of the levels. And following that strategy, we would need four, six, whatever it is, more elementary school teachers than what we have in this budget. But give us something to aspire to. Also speaks to the community that, you know, you can buy a turf, I'm sure, how many times have we heard, you can buy a turf field, but, you know, here's where we're going. And if that's, you know, if that target is not what you think is right, then let your voice be heard, but that's where we're going. So we don't have to do it for this budget. I'll take either answer on the teacher, the English teacher at Houston High School. But I think that'd be a really important activity for us, is to say, this is our, our student head, student teacher ratio that we're ultimately going to have, and you and I talked about, you know, it may, it may take some help from the city to make that vision come true.
So we'll put this on for further discussion.
Setting an optimal class size at each grade level. I would like to see us do that, but kind of, at least at the elementary level, have a first cut at that answer over the summer. We talked about there's five growth positions, somebody mentioned, there's five growth positions in this budget. Depending on what those answers are about what kind of class sizes we'd like to see, certainly what we're, what we've been talking about in terms of capacity would be smaller class sizes than we operate today. And I'm taking too long to say, my point, my point is, I think we ought to be thinking in terms of hiring four or five additional elementary school teachers for the upcoming school year. If the growth materializes, then class sizes don't shrink. But if the growth does, doesn't suck up all that extra capacity, then class sizes do, do shrink. What I don't know is how do you start, what kind of conflict do you start to get into with the shared space for sped and MAPs teachers on a cart?
That was my next question, where are you going to find the space? Is it more important to have smaller class sizes for kindergarten, or cram three sped teachers in a classroom?
I would say that I think that's a concern for Mr. Prokosky, and we had a long conversation this morning about what is best for children. And we are concerned about that. I think when we talked about portables as a leadership team, we talked about portables for growth. Mr. Prokosky's concern is, we are doing OT and PT in a shower in a locker room. We have three special ed teachers in the same classroom. And if you go in there, and I recommend, please, all of you go into that classroom and sit and try to listen to a lesson being taught in that space, or go to the speech and hear what it's like in the common space where they're trying to share that space. I think part of the need for portables is to deal with those immediate issues that we have right now. So I would easily say that three of those classroom spaces would be utilized for those classes right now that aren't. Easily. And then I think the other spaces we talked about, and, Mr. Grace, how many did you say new students did we see yesterday?
We had a hundred signs yesterday, I think up at two to two sixty now.
On the new student registration. Now, some of those are kindergartens, so that's completing numbers, but we are seeing growth. So my assumption is that between utilizing this, moving the teachers who are sharing space right now that's not good instruction, and dealing with our growth, that we may not have any classroom space available to deal with class sizes.
And when you're referring to growth, you mean growth in a grade band where we may have to add an additional class?
Right, right. So I think that's a concern, but that's.
I mean, it's obviously going to depend on each individual situation about what growth you have and whatnot.
Right.
I mean, one of the reasons I, I felt strongly that we should add twelve portables is because we have an overcrowding situation. And you look at Dogwood, and we're overcrowded, so I understand the growth, but I think we've got to look really, really hard about how do we reduce that overcrowding. And I realize that, you know, some of those spaces maybe need to address some of the issues that you had identified. But one of the other things we talked about was, you know, MAPs on carts. Well, there's a, there's a real judgment as to what's more important, smaller class size and a teacher on a cart, or, and those are things that I think we need to look at. So I would really encourage us to do what we can to try and reduce those class sizes as much as we can.
Would it be possible, or would it be asking a lot for you guys to come back at, either the, the next board meeting would be the April board meeting or the May board meeting, and say, for these two campuses, we've got six new classrooms. If enrollment stays as it is today, we'll use them in this fashion. And if enrollment grows, you know, every time we add a classroom, so there's going to be six new spaces. And I realize it won't exactly be the speds in the portable.
Correct, because I think Mr. Prokosky's plan is for fourth grade to go.
Right, so you might, you might empty out what's currently, you might move what's currently a regular ed classroom into a portable and move sped into that regular ed classroom, but it's still six new spaces. And if enrollment stays the same, we'll use the six new spaces this way. And then as enrollment forces us to add regular ed classrooms, this gets pushed back. And the reason I'm asking is it would then give the board some insight into what those trade-offs are. So I, I take the point about OT, PT in a suboptimal space. I take the point about sped not being effective when you've got multiple teachers jammed in the classroom. The only pushback I would offer is, if I add a fourth grade teacher, that affects a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty kids. Every fourth grader has a little bit smaller class. So there's a small impact on a lot of kids versus a big impact on a few kids, and I'm, I'm not raising my hand as, as qualified to make that trade-off. It's saying it'd be interesting to the board to see what trade-offs we made.
And I would be careful, and I'll tell you why I would be careful. For our special education students, they deserve the same educational setting as all of our other students regardless of the size of their groups. And so having three special ed classes in the same classroom, that's, that's my caveat, isn't providing them the equal rights that the other students have. So I don't think a formula saying, well, let's look at the greater impact on the whole student population, is a fair statement to make. The reality is, special ed students aren't getting the same education that other students are because we're cramming them all in the same classroom, so.
You know, I'd be very careful about making a statement that says our special education students aren't getting the same education.
I'm just saying.
I think you're saying that maybe the best use of space might be to adjust the special ed classrooms. Is that kind of what I hear you saying?
Yes, that is.
I mean, that, that's maybe a little different than they're not getting.
Yes, I would, yeah.
So I want to echo something that Ken said. Once, I have full confidence in Ms. Pittman and Mr. Prokosky to lay out their facility the way that's going to be best for their students. I mean, they're amazing administrators, and so they're going to do what they need to do for kids, and I have complete faith in that. But it would be nice to, as someone that communicates with the community, and talks to parents just to understand the thought process, because they'll come to us and say, well, they may come to us and say, we didn't know why, or what was the decision? And, and that, we can just help get the word out as to what the plan is and why this is a good thing, and, and so I think that that's, that's.
That's a, that's a great.